Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is now called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Chair Flegas?
Here.
Commissioner Moody?
Here.
Commissioner Goines?
Present.
Commissioner Trusdale?
Present.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Schlotman?
Present.
Commissioner Bonar?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available to help. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you in advance on that. Going now to item number four. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of time, any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. All comments made under this item for specific items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number five, for possible action to approve the final minutes for the Planning Commission meeting of August 12, 2014, and September 9, 2014.
Sure. I'd like to speak to one of the agenda items.
Okay, come forward, sir.
All right.
Are you here to speak out of turn, or do you want to speak on an agenda item that's on our -- tonight?
On the agenda.
Yeah, it'd probably be better if you waited to that time and then speak, and then we give everybody an opportunity. I know that that portion of the agenda, when we read it in, is a little bit confusing to a lot of folks, but if you want to speak on a specific agenda item, unless you have to -- you have to be somewhere else, we would ask that you wait till that agenda item comes up.
Sorry about that.
No problem. It is a confusing thing. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes for August 12, 2014, and September 9, 2014?
Mr. Chair, my motion is to approve the minutes of both meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote.
I'll be abstaining on this item, seeing as how I didn't get a copy of those previous minutes. I'm sorry, was this in regards to the previous minutes?
August 12, 2014, and September 9, 2014, Planning Commission meetings.
I didn't review those.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As I was not at either of those meetings, I have to abstain on this vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonar. Anybody else? Okay, please vote. Motion to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meetings of August 12, 2014, and September 9, 2014 carries, noting the abstentions of Commissioners Schlotman and Bonar. Let's move on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that Commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action? Good evening. If you could state your name and addresses, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Yes, my name is Terry Care with the firm of McDonnell-Cronell-Wilson at 2300 West Sahara, Suite 1200, and on your agenda is item number 39. That's an application for a special use permit by 322 LLC. It's a property that's located on Fremont Street. Following no fewer than three telephone conferences this afternoon with Mr. Jeff Victor from the Fremont Street Experience, and the mutually recognized need to continue discussions, I would request that that item be held in abeyance until the next Commission meeting, if that's possible, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other -- are there anybody -- excuse me, any other housekeeping items?
Mr. Chairman, the following item has been requested to be held in abeyance to the November 4, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 38, SUP 55677. The following items have been requested to be withdrawn without prejudice. Items number 33 and 34, SUP 55733 and SDR 55734. Thank you.
Do any of the members of the public wish to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion. Do any of the Commissioners wish to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, Commissioner Moody, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My motion is to withdraw without prejudice items 33 and 34, and obey items 38 and 39.
And both of those abeyances will be to the November 4, 2014 Planning Commission meeting?
That is correct.
Okay, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on item 38 inasmuch as the owner of this property is a tenant in another building of mine.
Thank you, Commissioner. Go ahead and vote. Motion carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Trusdale on item number 38. We're now going to the one-motion-one-vote portion of the agenda. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission, not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff, should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Does anybody want any item removed from the one-motion-one-vote portion of the agenda? Seeing none, we'll proceed. Item number seven is TMP 55736. The applicant owner is Toll --
Beg your pardon?
Item number seven is TMP 55736. The applicant owner is Toll South LV LLC. For possible action on a request for a tentative map for a 119-lot, single-family residential subdivision on the north side of Alta Drive, west of Desert Foothills Drive, in Ward 2, Councilman Beers. Staff is recommending approval. Related items number eight, nine, and 10, beginning with item number eight, which is VAR 55721. The applicant is Prayer Mountain International Church of Las Vegas. The owner is International Church of Las Vegas, Inc., et al. For possible action on a request to reinstate a previously approved variance to allow 119 parking spaces, where 338 spaces are required, at the southwest corner of Clished Shadows Parkway and Clark County 215, in Ward 4, Councilman Anthony. Related item number nine is VAC 55722. For possible action on a request to reinstate a previously approved petition to vacate U.S. government patent easements generally located southwest of the intersection of Clished Shadows Parkway and Novat Street. Staff is recommending approval. And final related item number 10 is SDR 55723. For possible action on a request to reinstate a previously approved site development plan review for a proposed two-story, 35-foot-tall, 66,192-square-foot church, house of worship, and school with waivers of the Lone Mountain West wall and landscape standards to allow retaining walls up to 16 feet in height, where 3-foot, 6-inch walls are required, and a zero-foot landscape buffers along portions of the north, south, east, and west perimeters, where 7 feet is required. Staff is recommending approval. Going on to related items number 11 and 12, beginning with item number 11, is VAR 55763. The applicant is West Care Nevada, Inc. The owner is Fitz House Enterprises, Inc. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a zero-foot front yard setback for a proposed port-cocher, where 10 feet is required at 323 North Maryland Parkway in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. The other related item, 12, SDR 55764. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review to expand the parking lot and add a port-cocher with waivers to allow a zero-foot perimeter landscape buffer width, where 15 feet is required adjacent to rights away, and to allow a zero-foot width adjacent to interior lot lines. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 13 is SUP 55639. The applicant is Nevada Health Centers, Inc. The owner is Constantino Novell Nevada II LLC. For possible action on a request for a major amendment to an approved special use permit for a proposed 2,357-square-foot expansion to an existing 1,840-square-foot social service provider use at 5,001 East Bonanza Suite, Suite Number 104, in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 14 is SUP 55674. The applicant is The Cheesecake Factory. The owner is Simon Chelsia for Las Vegas Development LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 8,861-square-foot supper club establishment use with a 1,631-square-foot outdoor patio within an existing shopping center at 505 South Grand Central Parkway in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 15 is SUP 55720. The applicant is Device Pit Stop. The owner is Excel Centennial LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 1,234-square-foot secondhand dealer, personal computer, laptop computers, and other similar computer devices use at 6440 Sky Point Drive, Suite Number 130, in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 16 is SUP 557741. Excuse me, SUP 55741. The applicant owner is Farm Capital Management LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 1,700-square-foot restaurant with drive-thru use at 8416 Farm Road, in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 17 is VAC 55747. The applicant owner is Toll South LV LLC. For possible action on a request for a petition to vacate public utility drainage and city of Las Vegas sewer easements generally located north of the northern alignment of Seborga Avenue between Fox Hill Drive and Sky Vista Drive, in Ward 2, Councilman Beers. Staff is recommending approval. That completes the reading of all the one-motion-one-vote items. Does anybody want any of these items pulled at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the one-motion-one-vote.
Just need to ask for public comment.
Certainly. Okay, do any members of the public wish to be heard on the one-motion-one-vote portion of the agenda? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion. Any Commissioners wish to be heard on this? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the one-motion-one-vote portion of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of items 7 through 17 on the one-motion-one-vote portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve items 7 through 17 carries.
Mr. Chairman, item 7 is final action unless appealed within seven days. Items 8, 9, 10, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17 are final action unless appealed within 10 days. Items 11 and 12 will be going forward to the City Council on November 19.
Thank you. Now, moving on to the public hearing items, we'll begin with item 18. The applicant is Eric Martonovich. The owner is BCNV LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow two existing accessory structures, Class 2, to be 16 feet and 37 feet in height, where 10 feet 6 inches is the maximum height allowed at 5636 Donald Road, in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject site consists of a 1,092-square-foot, single-family residence, a horse corral, and horse stables. The applicant is requesting a variance to address a citation issued by code enforcement for excessive accessory structure height. The applicant constructed a 16-foot-tall and a 37-foot-tall horse training apparatuses that exceed the height of the main dwelling unit. The horse training apparatuses were constructed without proper building permits. Staff recommends denial, as the applicant has presented no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance pursuant to Title 19.16 that would justify their request. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and if we could hear from the applicant, and if you'll give us your name and address. Good seeing you again.
Eric Martonovich, 5636 Donald Road. I don't know what I'm supposed to say. I've been in here, I guess this is the second time. I came in last time, and you guys asked me to put a meeting for all the neighbors and have them come in and see if anybody had any problems, and I did that, and everybody was positive and wanted it to go forward. I'm not sure what I'm supposed to say here. I've been trying to work with the city on this for quite a while now, and trying to get this figured out. It's something, it's part of, we're professional performers, and this is part of what we need in order to train at home and do what, I mean, this is part of our livelihood and just what we do in general. I'm not really sure.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, go ahead.
I have a bunch of signatures from the neighbors, saying they're happy to have it. I think there's 20 here. I actually had more, but somehow I lost the paper. I'd emailed it to Planning at one point, but somehow --
Could we have that handed to the clerk?
Yep.
And we'll make it part of the record? Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I will close the -- excuse me. Oh, I guess not. Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Commissioner Trusdale?
I'm good. I'm just, I was just reading.
Commissioner Moody?
Yeah, thank you. Eric, thank you for holding a neighborhood meeting. Although staff's recommended denial, the reason they've done that is because the height of these, they're considered accessory structures, and the height is above what's allowed, but I was really interested to know what your neighbors thought of this, if they had any strong disagreement, and to the contrary, they support you, they've signed the petition. I think this can be done in a harmonious and compatible way, considering the surrounding properties and the reaction of your neighbors. So, again, thank you, and I'm going to support your application tonight.
Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Commissioner Moody, on the conditions of approval on item number two, would you be willing to add language stating that all necessary building permits shall be obtained from inspections within 180 days? So this doesn't drag on forever?
Yeah, can, do you understand what he's asking?
Yeah, I kind of thought that was part of the deal already, actually.
Okay, very good. Then we will, if there are no other comments, I'm happy to make a motion.
Please do, Commissioner.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding item 18, VAR 53657, my motion is for approval with the added language to condition number two, that all building permits will be obtained and completed.
Yeah, final inspection.
Within 180 days, and the applicant has agreed to that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number 18 with the additional condition carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be final action unless appealed within 10 days.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night. Moving on to related items 19 and 20, beginning with item number 19. This is SUP 55031. The applicant owner is CCOB Family Trust. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a private school primary use at 5705 North Rainbow Boulevard, in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number 20 is SDR 55043. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed three-building, 8,044-square-foot private school primary with waivers to allow a 2-foot-wide landscaper buffer on a portion of the south side of the property, where 8 feet is required, and a 0-foot-wide landscape buffer on the east side of the property, where 15 feet is required. This is in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting to convert an existing single-family dwelling with a casita into a public or private school primary use for a private school at 5705 North Rainbow Boulevard. The property is currently vacant and in disrepair. The applicant is proposing to remodel the existing structures for the use of two-room private school with space to grow in the future. The exterior will be painted using a similar color palette as the current color in order to keep with the aesthetic of the residential neighborhood, as well as a circular driveway will be installed that will function as the drop-off and pickup area for the school. A waiver and an exception are required for perimeter landscape buffers and trees, but the overall impact of the site is minimal. Staff recommends approval of the applications with conditions. If denied, the property owner could not be used as a school. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could hear from the applicants, please, if you'll state your names and addresses for the record, and welcome.
Good evening, my name is Yi Hong Liu, 1669 Horizon Ridge Parkway, Suite --
I apologize, I couldn't hear your name, if you could just be a little bit louder.
My name is Yi Hong Liu, 1669 Horizon Ridge Parkway, Suite 120. The project is a small private school, and what we're doing is we're converting an existing residential building into a school project, and the school has, you know, quite a bit of driveway in front of the building, and that allows us to have about nine stacking space for the park, you know, for the pickup and drop-off areas, and based on our traffic study, that will be sufficient for the school use. And also, the last time we showed having like 10 parking spaces, now we're increased to 14 parking spaces. So the new site plan showing what we have, we have 14 parking spaces for the school, and the school only have two classrooms right now, and each classroom will hold like 20 students. And also, you know, if you look at it, you know, the building is a rectangular profile, and what we did here is on the perimeter of the building, where, you know, we, it is a bearing wall, and then, you know, the inside of the share wall actually was kept intact. So what we did to remodel is going to be changing the configuration of the interior, and then to meet the ADA requirement for the, you know, for the bathroom requirement, also for the classroom as well, and then adding some doors and windows along the perimeter, and then we also converting the carports, one of the carports into the interior space. So that way gave us, you know, the functional plan for the school to work. And on the perimeter of the project, you know, what we did is, you know, we designate the playground for the project, and also, you know, we have perimeter landscaping around the, surrounding the property, so, and also we're agreeing on all the conditions in the staff report, so if, you know, we're approved, we're going to proceed based on the staff recommendation.
Thank you very much, sir. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners.
Excuse me, how many children are going to attend this school, and what were the grades?
We are going to have a maximum of 50 students.
Before you start, ma'am, I need you to go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
Okay, Maggie Bray, 6955 North Drango.
Hi, Maggie.
Hi.
So what are the grades again?
K through 8 is what we're obtaining the license for.
And how many students will be on the premise at one time?
Up to 50.
In K through 8, there will only be 50 students?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then, and there's 14 parking places?
Yes.
How many teachers?
Two.
Two teachers for the whole school?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Moody?
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Bray, thank you for having a neighborhood meeting last month when you came in. Not only did you have a neighbor who strenuously objected to this, but there were also a number of postcards and pages with signatures on it in opposition, and what you've done by holding the neighborhood meeting is help explain what it is, show how you're not planning to compete with the school next to you. You've also agreed to put the parking places in, so I'm really pleased with the way this has come out, and I agree with staff's recommendation, so I don't know if there are any other comments, but I'm prepared to make a motion on this.
Please do, Commissioner.
The staff has some comment.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, I have amended condition on SDR 55043. I'm going to amend condition number three to read as follows. All development shall be in conformance with the building elevations, date stamped 7/16/2014, and a site and landscape plan date stamped 10/08/14, and accept as amended by conditions herein. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you accept that amended condition?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Moody.
What's that?
Just need to have her say that on the record.
Yeah, you need to just be a little bit louder. Do you accept the amended condition?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, my motion on item 19, SUP 55031, is to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number 19 carries.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, we got one more for you here.
Oh.
On related item number 20, SDR 55043, my motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to amended condition three, as stated by staff and as agreed to by the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item 20 carries.
Mr. Chairman, item 19 and item 20 are final action unless appealed within 10 days.
Have a good night.
Thank you again.
Moving on now to related items 21, 22, and 23, beginning with item number 21, which is GPA 55743. The applicant owner is Gabriella Navarro. For possible action on a request to amend a portion of the general plan from L, Low-Density Residential, to SC, Service Commercial, at the southwest corner of Lake Mead Boulevard and Michael Way, in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending denial. Related item number 22 is ZON 55744. For possible action on a request for rezoning from RE, Residence Estates, to C1 Limited Commercial, in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending denial. Final related item number 23 is SDR 55745. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for two proposed commercial buildings totaling 15,350 square feet, in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the requested changes to the existing Low-Density Residential General Plan land -- plan land use designation and residence estate zoning designation to service commercial and limited commercial respectively are too intense and intrusive for the surrounding properties, particularly for the single-family residences located to the north, east, and south. Staff is not in support of the general plan amendment and rezoning applications and recommends denial. Therefore, the requested site development review also cannot be supported to construct a commercial building. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, and sir, if you'll give us your name and address, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. Tim Ayala, four-six hundred Sunset Road, representing the applicant this evening. We respectfully want to ask you for a continuance. The reason being is we want to provide you with a traffic study on Lake Mead and Michael Way, and it's because the intensity of the traffic, I think that would be a major plus for our presentation, showing you the way that we are designing this proposal, professional offices.
As I understand it, you wanted to obey this to the November Planning Commission meeting?
Yes, please.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Have you had a neighborhood meeting as well?
Yes.
So that's already done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do any members of the public wish to be heard on these items? Sir, if you'll come forward and state your name and address, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Councilman. Mike Fitzgerald, eighteen forty-eight Shadow Mountain Place. We did have a meeting which completely opposed to our neighborhood. We don't have even streetlights, curb, or gutter. We were zoned at one time when we bought our property as equestrian estates. Seventy percent of our community-
May I interrupt you for a moment? Right now, he's asking to have this obeyed, and so the question becomes, do you want to be heard on this item tonight, maybe not come back next meeting, or would you rather come back for the next meeting and give us your presentation? Because I'd rather, right now, if you're planning on coming back to be heard on this, that the commission discuss whether or not the abeyance should go forward, or if you want to talk in opposition to the abeyance.
No, I believe what you're saying. We went through this, like, five years ago on trying to rezone our area already. So I believe I can come back in November.
Yeah, because I, and I would recommend you do so because, you know, the memories are short, and, but let's see what the commissioners have to say about his request for an abeyance first.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Come on up, ma'am.
I'm Catherine Scott, fifty-two-seventy-four Sawyer Avenue, and I was one of the neighbors five years ago. My memory isn't so short, and I resent the time it takes to come down, be heard. So it's big and precious for me to come down on a regular basis. I know nobody who's in favor of it. Okay?
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. If you'll give us your name and address.
Ann McMillan, fifty-three-fifty-three Sawyer Avenue. This goes on all the time for this lot, ever since, let's see, who was it? I think it was Mrs. Sawyer, the grandfather. Anyway, and we come down here, they keep changing and going further and further, just to see if they can whittle us down, so we don't show up. So I would like to know how many times they can put it in abeyance, put it on to the next meeting, so we have to keep coming down here and objecting to their rezoning.
Thank you, ma'am. The answer is they can go, I believe, two times. A third time they have to come before us and show cause on why it should be obeyed.
And then how long do they have to wait till they put it forward again to you?
If it's denied, one year.
Is that the, is that the answer to your question? Your question was-
I did not hear. I'm sorry.
I think her question was how long before it would be heard in front of us. Is that-
No, how long can they, before they can again apply and go through everything?
If they were denied, they have a one-year waiting period.
A one-year waiting period. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this? What I'm going to do now is just bring it forward for discussion amongst the commissioners regarding the request for abeyance. And Commissioner Quinn, you want to kick it?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So you had your neighborhood meeting?
Yes.
And at what point did you decide you were going to do a traffic study where you didn't tell these people who all came down here to speak on this item this evening that you were going to hold it? Because I find this really, in my opinion, very disrespectful, that these people had a neighborhood meeting, and I don't know if it was two weeks or three weeks ago, or when it was, that you did not inform them of this traffic study and that you were going to obey it. So at what point did you make this decision?
Okay, ma'am, Chairman. After a meeting, we realized that it is very important for us to show you the traffic study and the major impact that we, it will work in our favor, and it can show you all the traffic, the noise attenuation that our project will bring into this area to buffer for them, for the residents, because in reality, you know, I don't want to make my presentation, but in reality-
No, I just wanted, my concern is-
Yes, we realize that traffic is very intense there, and it will be a plus for us to show you a traffic study.
Right.
So we just decide after the meeting, because they were talking about horses, as the gentleman, he just talked about curb and gutter and sidewalks that is already in place in Lake Mead.
I just want you to know that I think it's very disrespectful that these people came down here when you planned to obey it. That's it. That's all I have to say.
I understand.
Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I agree. However, if we're going to hold this in abeyance, I mean, are we looking at thirty days or sixty days? Putting together a traffic study might take some time, and if he wants to share it with the community and have another meeting to share his results, maybe we should look at sixty days. So-
I wouldn't mind to have another neighborhood meeting and show them the traffic study.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I kind of agree with Commissioner Quinn, but I don't know what the reason is to hold this up for a traffic study. I think you just said on the record that you want to show them how bringing traffic into their neighborhood's going to be good. This is a residential neighborhood. It's low-density. This is your, this is your second try at this.
No.
Hear me out. This use needs to be down at Lake Mead or Decatur to the east, or up on Lake Mead and Jones to the west. We don't need commercial buildings in the middle of a neighborhood, and especially with no street curbs and gutter and a rural character with no streetlights. So you can bring me back a traffic study and show me that a line of Rolls-Royces is coming down there, and I wouldn't support it.
Commissioner Boner?
With everything that's been said, I don't think the traffic study's going to help your case one bit, and you'd be more wise to save everybody grief by withdrawing rather than asking for abeyance.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to agree with my fellow commissioners on this. I don't think this is about a traffic study. I think this is about whether or not this project is compatible and harmonious with the surrounding area, and quite frankly, I can't support a motion to obey. So any other commissioners wish to be heard? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Excuse me, Commissioner.
Sir, we're going to vote now. We already had a public hearing, so right now we're on whether or not to have the motion to obey.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to deny the abeyance.
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale. Please vote. Note that a yes vote is for denial. The motion to deny the abeyance carries. And so, sir, we're going to ask you now to give us your presentation on your three items.
We respectfully want to withdraw without prejudice.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no objections, I'd make a motion to withdraw without prejudice. Without. That's fair.
Do we need to have a public comment on the motion to-
No, you can just vote on that.
Okay. Okay, so the motion is to have this matter withdrawn without prejudice. Please vote. Motion to approve the withdrawal without prejudice carries for items number twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
And, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, that just indicates that the applicant can reapply at any time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, what was just pointed out, he's withdrawn this without prejudice means, which means he can at a future point in time bring this matter again before the Planning Commission. So right now, you're going to have to be vigilant if it is what you want to do to come down here and oppose it, or support it, whatever the case may be. So with that known, that's what just happened. His application is no more, but nothing prevents him from filing a new application in this matter. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We now move on to items number twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, beginning with item number twenty-four, which is GPA five-five-seven-seven-five. The applicant owner is the Church LDS Presiding Bishop for possible action on request for a general plan amendment from PF Public Facilities to ML Medium Low Density Residential on the north side of Bonanza Road, east of Decatur Boulevard in Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number twenty-five, which is ZON five-five-seven-seven-seven for possible action on request for a rezoning from R-One Low Density Residential to R-Three Medium Density Residential in Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Final related item number twenty-six is SDR five-five-seven-seven-nine for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed thirty-nine-unit multifamily residential development with a waiver to allow a zero-foot perimeter landscape buffer along a portion of the west perimeter where a minimum of six feet is required. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, staff is in support of the proposed general plan amendment and rezoning application, says the medium-low-density residential designation and medium-density zoning district will allow for transitional development to buffer the higher-intensity land uses to the west and south with the lower-intensity residential uses on the east and north. The associated site development plan review is in substantial compliance with code requirements with the exceptional waiver of landscape buffer along the buffer depth along the western property line adjacent to the existing religious facility parking lot. Waiver is supported by staff due to the unique shape of the lot. As such, staff is in support of all proposed applications, is recommending approval. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received after publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. And may we hear from the applicant, please, if you'll state your name and address, and good evening?
David Dwyer, Dwyer Engineering, seventy-three-ten Smoke Ranch Road, Suite E, Las Vegas, Nevada. And I represent the client. We've read the conditions of the recommendations of approval, and we concur with all the recommendations.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Good evening, sir. If you'll state your name and address. Or, oh, you're with this group?
Yes, sir.
Come on up, sir.
Frank Bingham, four-twelve Estella Avenue. I have a letter I'd like to read which has some attachments to it. It'll take just a minute. The letter's to the City Department of Planning. The subject's GPA five-five-seven-seven-five and ZON five-five-seven-seven-seven and SDR five-five-seven-seven-nine. Dear Planning Commission, we appreciate the opportunity to comment on the subject proposed actions. Enclosed are petitions addressed to the City of Las Vegas Department of Planning opposing the proposed zoning change and site development plan. These documents contain the names, addresses, and signatures of one hundred and forty-six people who either reside adjacent to or live near the subject property. We believe the applicant's plan to build a thirty-nine-unit multifamily residential, family residential development on the two-point-one-nine acres would have significant adverse impacts to our neighborhoods. We believe that these impacts would include the following. One, lower the property values of our homes. Changing the zoning from low-density to medium-density residential for a large area in our neighborhoods would, we believe, have considerable adverse impacts by lowering the value of the property in the area. Two, reduced quality of life, which would be associated with a higher population density. We believe the proposed rezoning and subject development would result in an increase in crime. It is a proven fact that areas with high population density, such as being proposed by the developer, have significantly more incidence of crime than low-zone residential areas. We presently have few crime problems in our neighborhoods. Three, substantial increase in traffic. The property is located across the street from Western High School. Also, Ruth-Five Elementary School is located about two blocks east of the site. Both of these schools produce considerable traffic on Bonanza Road. Adding a large number of additional residences would significantly add to the already heavy traffic problem in the area. We were disappointed with the location where the public meeting was held in review, to review the site plan and zoning change proposals. The church where the meeting was held was about two miles from the subject property. There are three schools adjacent to or close to the proximity of the project area: Western High School, Ruth-Five Elementary School, and Gibson Middle School. Where the meetings could have been held, this would have been more convenient to the affected residents and would have had, we believe, resulted in a much larger attendance. Also, the material presented by the developer lacked specifics, such as sketches or drawings of what the buildings might look like. He did have a photo of a condominium on display, which when he was asked about it, agreed that it had nothing to do with his proposed construction. I noticed this site plan that you've got up here, I don't remember that even being discussed or brought forth at the meeting. Also, we would think that the LDS church would be concerned about thirty-nine condominiums or apartments constructed immediately behind the Bonanza Chapel. This, we believe, could result in safety problems for people attending meetings in this building, and could possibly result in vandalism of their facilities. Finally, we are not opposed to the development of property as long as the project conforms to the requirements of low-density residential. And this is signed by myself, Frank Bingham, Charles Ankerman at four-oh-one Horn Street, Jack Smith at four-oh-eight Fortune, and Alan Ivy at four-three-oh-eight. And I've got the attachment with the hundred and forty-six names, addresses, and signatures of people that are opposing this project attached to the letter.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Bingham. If we could have a copy of your letter and that petition you have signed.
You want to put it in the envelope or just like this?
Just like it is right now, and we'll make it part of the record.
Also, I've got people in their neighborhood that have not mailed in their little cards. I've got four, about five or six of them here.
Thank you, and we'll make those part of the record as well. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? It seems like we have quite a few folks. If I could get the applicant to just kind of step aside, and if you're going to speak, please line up at one of the mics, and I'll get, we'll get to you in turn. So, sir, if you'll state your name and address, please?
My name is John Napoleon. My address is six-three-one Hogan Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada. It's interesting that independently, at least I've concluded many of the things previously spoken on, nevertheless, because I am a property owner there, I personally own two properties directly adjoining the church property. One of them is four-four-one-seven St. Andrews Circle. The other is six-three-one Hogan Drive, in which I now reside. I have personal and direct experience in the sale of LDS properties as a former physical facilities manager in the office of the Presiding Bishopry in Hawaii, in the North Pacific, in the South Pacific, and Southeast Asia. I am surprised that the church would attempt the sale of surplus land to the detriment of individual owners in the neighborhood and the community in general. I am opposed to rezoning the subject property because my property value will unfairly decrease while the church enjoys an increase in value because raising density will just make a higher use of the property. Privacy will be compromised in the pool areas of both my properties. I was told Sidelight Line would not allow a view from the second story of the proposed building. I was told sightline would not allow a view from the second story of the proposed buildings. But actually, at the time of our meeting, there were no elevations shown, so we couldn't really determine that. After rezoning, the developer becomes free to build for profit and not the wishes of the concerned neighbors. What's to keep, in that case? What's to keep a voyeuristic person from looking over a six-foot fence, even if the sightline from the building doesn't work? For me, the privacy is not good. Crime increases with higher densities properties. The safety of my family is at stake. This project will now have quite a few people at large just on the other side of my fence, and that makes me feel relatively uncomfortable. I will need to install, I believe if this is approved, cameras and an alarm system to protect my family where none is currently needed. Traffic will increase at the two schools on Bonanza, and the additional units perhaps will create another 80 vehicles going in and out of that congested area. Already, traffic is jammed and can only be exacerbated as the property is rezoned, if it's rezoned. When buying into this neighborhood, I valued the low-density as a desirable lifestyle. The adjoining property is currently zoned, the same as mine, and could be developed just as mine. That's okay with me. I was personally happy that the adjacent property was zoned by the LDS Church. Now, I see this rezoning as a relatively selfish action to the detriment of me and my property. I encourage the LDS Church to develop in compliance with the current zoning or convert the entire lot for church or park use.
Thank you very much, sir. Sir, if you can state your name and address, please?
My name is Leon McKittrick. I reside at 409 Estella Avenue, and I have a number of issues. One, notice. I attended the hearing, and at the hearing, I requested artist renditions so I could see what the exterior of the building would look like. There are none. We were not given any. I asked for four plans so I could see the square size of the units and get an idea as to whether there'd be patios or balconies or something. There were none. They indicate, the person requesting this showed a 47-foot street access from Bonanza to the back, no other ingress or egress, and that street ended in a cul-de-sac. My concerns is that there is not adequate space for a fire truck to turn in that cul-de-sac. There is not an adequate radius for trash trucks to move around. There is no play area for children. They're going to be playing in the parking lot. Next, there is, this particular development falls under residential adjacency standards, Section 1908.060, which is applicable because this is an R3 development. And in this, it requires lighting levels at the residential property line to be no more than .2-foot candles. Now, they've requested practically, I think it's maybe nine feet between the street and the property line, which is people's backyards. Now, in the general, I forget what it's called, general GPA, general plan, there is no street going on the back of these houses. So out of nowhere comes this street. Now, it is stated in the conditions that there would be a 70-foot street. There's only a 47-foot easement. I would like somebody to explain how we stretch 47 feet to 70. Now, they indicate that there's four plans attached to these, this, whatever you call it, the booklet over there on the wall. There were no four plans. We've never seen any. We've never received any notice whatsoever. Now, going back to the lighting levels, Section 1908.060 indicates that there is to be a .2-foot candle at the property line, at that line dividing the street and the backyard.
Sir, I've kind of been limiting everybody to about three minutes, so if you can...
I'll wrap it up real quick.
Wrap it up. I would appreciate it.
There is a minimum of 2.0-foot candles for parking in the street. That parking is only five feet from the backyard. I've not seen anywhere in the conditions or anything else how it can go from two-candle foot to .2 in a matter of five feet. The lighting that was shown to us at the public meeting does not meet these requirements, and a change from these lighting standards require a standard of proof that is substantial and convincing evidence. Section 1908.0506, E is an easy six.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, if you could state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Lolly Napoleon. My address is 631 Hogan Drive, 89107. I am the wife of John Napoleon. I will try to hold my thoughts to three minutes. I thought perhaps presenting a different scenario from that which you've heard may help you to understand. Those of you who are not LDS or Mormon may think that the office of the Presiding Bishopry is a churchy or ecclesiastical side of the church. In fact, it is the business arm and financial arm of the church. It has nothing to do with the religious side. I say that because that was my husband's position. In the South Pacific and in Southeast Asia, we lived abroad for 12 years. I'm a retired interior designer. We know from whence we speak. The, our property, both properties are exactly adjacent to the church property, which has a very narrow flag lot going to this back area to be developed, which is 40-some-odd feet. Our properties have both been encroached by high school students and others trying to open our windows and coming through. Already, we are at risk. Our 21-year-old granddaughter lives in our St. Andrews property. My husband and I are in our 70s. To have a two-story building overlooking our pool, our home, we are elderly, we are vulnerable. We take numerous medications. When you see someone who's handicapped with medications all over the place, easy target. We're not poor. We have many things that we've brought back from Asia in our lifestyle. We are an easy target. Our grandchildren and great-grandchildren would be an easy target. If they are looking to develop a medium-density building, there are many other properties within the vicinity already zoned for such. Why rezon? Why rezon? I've asked the developer if this building is contingent upon the rezoning of this property from low-density to medium-density. His answer was simply, yes, it is contingent. So if this contingency is not met, we will continue to live the quiet lives which we thought we have bought into. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Sir, if you'll state your name and address, please?
My name is Vince Herrera. I live at 4409 St. Andrews Circle. I've lived here for over 20 years. The reason why I bought there is because the street is a cul-de-sac. I can walk to the golf course, which is right on Washington and Decatur. At night, I can open my window and hear the birds. I can hear crickets, little bit of noise from the freeway. Every Friday, I look forward to listening to the football game at the high school. But by building that, those apartments right behind my, here's my house, here's the apartments. We're all single-story there. We've all lived there. My neighbor next door built her house in the 60s. We're all in our 70s. Our grandkids are big. It's a quiet street. There's, I think, one rental. All of us own our own homes. Why do we want high-density rentals behind our house? There's a lot of land all over Las Vegas that they could build their apartments right on the corner of Vegas Drive and Decatur. There's probably 30 acres right there. I like the peace and quiet. I like to be able to open my window at night and get the fresh air. I don't like air conditioning on 24/7. I can't afford the power bill. Commissioner Quinn, if I had your money, I wouldn't have the problem. But I'm saying, please, think about the old people that were set in our ways. We liked quiet and peaceful. We had our kids. We raised our grandkids. And I don't begrudge families, don't get me wrong, but in a space allotted for these homes is not big enough. Kids need to run and play. Where are they going to run? Where are they going to play? In the streets? No. So thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Ma'am, if you'll state your name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is Annette Crowder. I live at 400 Estella Avenue, Las Vegas. I have, I can't say much more than what these people ahead of me have said. I don't live as close. My house wouldn't back up to it, but it too was a reason we bought in the neighborhood. There was no apartments nearby. It's genuinely a gem in our city. It's not a high-end housing. It's just nice, normal. Everyone that comes works on our homes, they come in our neighborhood and say, wow, it's nice. There's no reason for people to drive through. This will add a lot more traffic to Bonanza. They say they have enough parking spaces. Well, I don't see where the visitors are going to park. If they have two cars per unit, that's 78, well, where's the visitors? They're going to be on Bonanza. They're going to take the places of the residents that already live on Bonanza. It's not even close nor convenient for them to visit back there. They're going to take the spots for the people at the parking, at the high school. It's just a nice, normal part of town. The church is fantastic there. The schools are fantastic there. You know, it's just a nice space, and I agree, there are more places, definitely more appropriate for this sort of building.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard? Sir, if you'll state your name and address, please?
Jack Smith, 4008 Fortune Avenue. I was one of the persons who canvassed Sneed and Fortune, and when I would show the people what was going to take place, there was not one single person that says, oh, I'm really happy about that. Everybody said, no, I do not want that in our neighborhood for the reasons that have been stated. We talk about parking. As I understood at the meeting, that there would be parking spaces also along the ingress and egress road. Is that correct? So we're cutting down on that 47-foot width there for parking spaces. Now, the church has had problems being across from Western High School. If the kid's parking in the parking lot and sitting in their cars and smoking and stuff like that, well, finally, they've cut down on that a little bit, but I can see these parking spaces right along there as a direct invitation to those Western High School kids to park there and sit there and have their cigarettes because they can't have them on school property. It's just something that, if they were going to build four nice homes for elderly people or something like that, that'd be fine. I have no problem with that. But as far as this high density, plus the R3, I'm not sure if there's a stipulation on that as to whether, if they want to build condos or they want to build apartments or low income after the rezoning is done. Does anyone know whether there's actual stipulation of what kind of building, or are they held to what they're proposing at this time? Can they change their mind, what kind of building?
Right now, they have a site development plan review in front of us, so they're going to probably pretty well have to stick to that.
Okay. But at the meeting, we talked about how much these were going to cost. They said approximately $80,000. Square footage-wise, about 1,000 square feet? Well, I don't know anybody that'd pay $80,000 for a 1,000-square-foot dwelling. It's just, the meeting itself was very uninformative, and it was just poorly presented, I thought. I was Director of Engineering for 42 years at Fox 5 here in town, just retired about two years ago. If I would have had a presentation like that, I think that I would have been kicked out for anything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion. Allow the applicant two minutes to respond.
Thank you. The landscape plans and the photos showing the type of buildings that were being built were present. There were two sets of them at the meeting for the people to look at. It's true, the finished floor plans were not fully developed at that time. They were not present. However, the biggest thing seemed to be people not wanting construction in their backyard. Now, there was some discussion about the site view. The sightlines were very carefully worked out for the placement of these buildings so that nobody can see into the backyards. There are city ordinances that require that. We also worked very closely with the fire department for the development of this piece of property so that the access in to the property meets the fire truck requirements. The landscaping along the west, the east property line on the flag lot, part where the parking is, the landscaping was put there to provide a landscaping barrier with those people, on those people's houses. And yes, the parking is there, but there is no landscaping on the east side next to the church property, so it will be trees and landscaping barrier between the property to the east. In answer to one of the questions the gentleman asked, the 70-foot-wide street is Bonanza. The 47-foot-wide flag lot, good 17 to that feet, is going into landscaping and parking and sidewalk. We did mention there, and we certainly have no problem with this, if we were to, I believe the constituents here would want it, but we would certainly be willing to put a nine-foot-high wall on the west side, I'm sorry, all three sides, so that you don't have the six-foot-high, nine-foot-high walls are much more of a deterrent for getting over for the people on the inside.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the commission wish to be heard on these items?
I do.
Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you. Mr. Crowder, I love to sleep with my windows open, and I certainly would not want a project of this intensity directly by me as well. And I don't have that much money, but I don't know where you heard that, so don't say that on TV because my husband's going to be watching this, so. Anyway, the issue here is the fact that you're coming into where these people reside, and it's their homes, and this is where they've lived their whole life. And when you have a zero buffer and, you know, you've got apartments and so many people encroaching onto this lifestyle, that I completely agree, if it was three or four lovely senior living homes or, you know, there's great, there's great things to put there, but the apartments will not see my support this evening because I always tell people, they don't believe how important the neighborhood coming out here and speaking to us is, but when I looked at this project and drove by it, I thought, nah, you know, this should be okay. But then, when these people come up and speak and they take their time and they tell you how important it is to them, I have to tell you that they speak volumes to me, so you will not see my support on this item tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other, any other commissioners wish to be heard? Commissioner Bonner?
Thank you. I don't think a nine-foot wall will help even at a lower density. I understand you've got parking against the north and the east side, but even with a nine- a nine, an agreement to do a nine-foot wall, I think this is just too dense in this area.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Goines?
Thank you. I'll be real brief. Mr. Dwyer, I don't know where you had the neighborhood meeting, but it sounds like it was away from the residence, where they weren't able to get to it. But, you know, when you have, I believe it's a hundred and forty-four signatures, I think it speaks for itself. This is an older neighborhood. I have a little investment in there. My dad was the principal of Ruth Fife Elementary, probably for about twenty years, so most of your kids probably were schooled by him. And I spent a few days over there myself. But however, the neighbors have spoken, and I'm not gonna be wilde the point anymore. I'm not gonna be able to support it simply because they don't want this in their neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sloman?
Yeah, I'm not gonna say a whole lot, but the same thing. I really didn't have a big issue with it at the beginning, after hearing a lot of the neighbors and understanding how long they've lived in this area, and putting myself in their shoes, and if I lived at a residence for twenty years, and this is a weird flag lot configuration where, you know, it's something that you get used to, something that's quiet, something where there's not much going on, and then you put apartments in there. I think it would be much more appropriate for single-family residents, or something on, you know, a lower density than the multifamily, so for those reasons, I couldn't support it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Much like Commissioner Quinn, as I came in tonight, having looked at this, this seemed to make sense to me. This is a mature neighborhood, and, you know, the city is looking for ways to revitalize neighborhoods like this, and it seemed to be good transitional zoning. However, having heard from the neighbors tonight, there is some strong opposition, and you consider, you know, the surrounding densities, and their point is well-taken. And for the same reasons that have been stated tonight, I don't know that I'm going to be able to support this.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm gonna join in in kicking the dead horse on this. I really think this is a bad fit. It's not even a transitional piece. I'm looking at the schematics and the backup material. North of this is an empty lot, north of the, I mean, north of the church is an empty lot, and north of the empty lot is more houses. And there's really nothing to transition between a church and residential property. So, you won't be receiving my support on this either. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, on item twenty-four, GPA five-five-seven-seven-five, move to deny.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote, and note that a yes vote is for denial. Motion to deny, item number twenty-four carries.
Item twenty-five, Z O N five-five-seven-seven-seven, move to deny.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote, and a yes vote is for denial. Motion to deny, item number twenty-five carries.
Item twenty-six, S D R five-five-seven-seven-nine, move to deny.
Thank you, Commissioner. Again, a yes vote is for denial. Motion to deny, item number twenty-six carries.
Mr. Chairman, items twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six will be heard at the November nineteenth city council meeting.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Moving on now to related items, number twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, beginning with item number twenty-seven, which is Z O N five-five-seven-five-eight. The applicant owner is Pets RX Nevada Inc., for possible action on request for rezoning from P.R. Professional Office and Parking to C. One Limited Commercial at one-one-one-seven North Decatur Boulevard in Ward Five, Councilman Bartle. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number twenty-eight is V A R five-five-seven-six-zero, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a residential adjacency setback of sixty-six feet, where eighty-five feet is required for a proposed five-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-nine-square-foot animal hospital, clinic, or shelter with no outside pens. Staff is recommending approval. Final related item number twenty-nine is S D R five-five-seven-six-one, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed five-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-nine-square-foot animal hospital, clinic, or shelter with no outside pens, with a waiver to allow a six-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the west property line where ten feet is required. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, an existing animal hospital will be demolished at this site, and the three parcels will be combined into a single parcel. All three of the parcels have a land use designation for the general plan of service commercial, which allows the C. One Limited Commercial. Two of those parcels are currently zoned P.R., parking and office zoning. There is a residential adjacency setback variance, landscape buffer width waiver, and two parking lot landscape design exceptions as part of this request. Staff's recommending approval of those due to the shallowness of the lot, and the exceptions are acceptable, as they're minor in nature. Additionally, the applicant has submitted a phasing plan that will allow the existing animal hospital to remain open during all phases of construction, as the parking lot and the existing veterinarian hospital will switch places and will get a redeveloped location. Staff recommends approval of all requests, and...
Mr. Chairman?
Before we go further, I'm gonna abstain on this item inasmuch as Dr. Hoyt, who runs that pet clinic there, has been a veterinarian for numerous pets I've had over the last thirty years, and the building's tired and it needs to be new.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, good evening. If we could hear from the applicant, if you give us your name and address, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Doug Heller with Mullen Heller Architecture.
I'm sorry, we didn't hear your last name?
Heller, H E L L E R.
Thank you.
With Mullen Heller Architecture, nine-twenty-four Park Avenue in Albuquerque, New Mexico. We are, have submitted this plan to, as staff said, to rebuild an animal hospital on the site of the existing animal hospital, and subsequently clean up some of the zoning. This piece of property that can, that the building sits on is actually three different pieces of property, and as we go through this process, we will replat this into one with the same zoning that's appropriate for the site.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on these items? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Goines?
Beautiful project. I think it'll be added plus to the neighborhood, so I don't have any issues with it, and I'll move for approval of item twenty-seven, Z O N five-five-seven-five-eight, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve, item number twenty-seven carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Item number twenty-eight, move for approval of variance five-five-seven-six-zero, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve, item number twenty-eight carries, again noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Item twenty-nine, S D R five-five-seven-six-one, move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions and recommendations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve, item twenty-nine carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Mr. Chairman, items twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine will be heard at the November nineteenth city council meeting.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Item number thirty, which is V A R five-five-six-eight-four, the applicant owner is David V. Kong, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a zero-foot side-yard setback, where five feet is the minimum required for an existing patio cover at eight-nine-six-two Bracken Cliff Court in Ward Four, Councilman Anthony. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this site is located in the RCL Single Family Compact Lot in zoning District. The structure does not conform to code and was built without permits. Staff finds that there's no unusual shape to the lot, and as a result, this is a self-imposed hardship, and recommends denial.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant, please, and good evening, if you'll give us your name and address?
My name Henry Kong, eight-nine-six-two Bracken Cliff Court.
Okay, sir, do you wanna tell us what you're trying to do? Hi.
Good evening. Francisco Esteban Ibarra, thirty-six, forty-four Bremen Street, Las Vegas, Nevada. And we, I am, he's the father for Mr. David Kong. He didn't make it tonight, he was having an emergency, and couldn't make it. And we're here tonight to explain a little bit about the beginnings of the work, the reasons why it was built, and so on. Like many times around town, he contracted somebody to build a patio for his side of the house, and the contractor told him that he would take care of permits, inspections, the run-arounds on the city, and so on. He started building, and one of those days, the city inspection came along, and boom, they found out that they have no permits and all. Not only that, but they didn't meet the very first thing, which was the setback for the patio cover that they were having, or they were building over there. Now, since they're building like that, they contacted me just to help them out in this situation. We kind of do a little sketching about what was going on over there, and in regards of the situation that they have in there, the reason for they to have a patio in that way was because usually, all over town, again, since, I mean, nineteen eighty-one or nineteen eighty-six to the present, all of the side setbacks are usually five feet and so on. In this case, we have ten feet side setback on the actual west side of the property. For that regard, that is a really wide setback that they would like to use as a, either as patio for getting together with family and so on, or to be able to back up a little boat or something for the summer, et cetera. Now, I was talking to some of the technicians at the city of, at the planning department, and they were telling me that they could build the patio in the back, they could come back and park the RV, I mean, not RV, but the boats and whatever they wanted in the back and so on. But obviously, because of the, because of the location of the patio, it would be very hard to come over and park in the back. So, the only way would be through parking straight back into that area. Now, I would like to show you, if possible, well, I pretty much brought those pictures, and I would like to, if possible, I don't know if you can see this in here. Basically, what we're doing is building pretty much on the side of the house. And I know, just like in the report, it says, the neighbor has a similar situation in which he's had a patio, I guess pretty much it can be seen in here. And obviously, despite the fact that he might be approved, or he might not be approved on his particular same situation, or the fact that he might have approved a setback or whatnot, we would just bring to the situation the case that we would like this to be approved and do an exception, a waiver, a variance, for a zero setback. Now, in the report as well, it is mentioned that it is a zero setback, and that we are pulling the patio all the way to the property line. Actually, the patio is built right before the property line, like three inches before, just because the block wall is right, the center of the block wall is in the center of the property line. So, we pull back a little bit, and we're gonna come back with a way to get the water out of the property, the neighbor's property, obviously. And then, part of the reasons for the setbacks are usually five feet on one side of the house, five feet on the other side of the house, so we can keep ten feet in order to keep away the possibility of a fire, let's say, a fire contamination from one house to the other. When sinister happens in one house, you don't want a fire going to the next house. In this case, obviously, we're gonna comply with the fire rating on the houses, because we're gonna use a stucco, and we're gonna have ten feet on this side and five feet on the other, or ten feet on the other side. We're gonna, we should be fine on that regard. And, if I might, we have copies of around nine neighbors on the neighborhood, give me value the redundance, redundance, and everybody was agreeing with that, and we would like to submit that is possible as part of the record, because once again, we didn't have a meeting, a community meeting, but we got the letters from all of the neighbors stating the address and signatures on all of them, nine letters altogether, in order to see if anybody was against it or not, in order to get this approved. And that's how we came to this.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Moody?
So, even if I had something from every neighbor in this neighborhood in support, I can't support it. This is not harmonious with the neighborhood, with this type of structure. There is a zero-foot setback here, and I think it's dangerous. You know, I hope you'll report whoever built this for you to the contractors' board. I won't support this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard on this? Commissioner Bonner?
An item that's not brought up very often is the fact that your new roof goes to the edge of your property. Do you think for one minute that the rain that comes off of that is gonna stop and go directly south down on the common wall that's there? Because, by the way, when there's a storm, as we've had here on a regular basis, it's gonna go three foot into the next guy's yard, and you have an actual liability there. And I don't think you could control the flow off the storms that we've had, even in a downspout of any kind. I just think you're, first of all, you had one strike with Manny, we were having it done illegally. Whether or not you knew it at the time, it's been done illegally. And with that issue, I just will not find support either on this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to deny item thirty, which is, look at the number here, V A R five-five-six-eight-four, subject to staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote, and notice, note that a yes vote is for denial. Motion to deny, item number thirty carries.
Mr. Chairman, this is final action unless appealed within ten days.
Thank you. Going on now to related items, number thirty-one and thirty-two, beginning with item number thirty-one.
No, that appeal needs to go to the city clerk's office.
Go ahead.
Okay. No, the appeal that the director indicated needs to go to the city clerk's office if they're gonna appeal within ten days.
On that last item, it is final action unless appealed within ten days to the city clerk's office.
Thank you. Now, going back to related items, thirty-one and thirty-two, beginning with item number thirty-one, which is S U P five-five-seven-one-five. The applicant is Barnett Lieberman. The owner is Leah Property LLC, for possible action request for special use permit for proposed mixed-use development at the northeast corner of Casino Center Boulevard and Coolidge Avenue in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Related item number thirty-two is S D R five-five-seven-one-six, for possible action request for a site development plan review for a proposed seventeen-story mixed-use development, including thirty-four thousand five hundred square feet of commercial space and two-hundred-and-eighty-one multifamily residential units. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the site is suitable to accommodate the proposed uses. Automated parking garage will be utilized for this project to accommodate the parking. The proposed mixed-use project of retail, office, and residence is an appropriate development of the eighteen B. Art District area of the downtown, and staff recommends approval of these items.
Thank you. If we could hear from the applicant, good evening.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Terry Murphy, five-one-six South Sixth Street, representing Barnett Lieberman this evening. representing Barnett Lieberman this evening. My understanding is that the residential portion of this was approved by the city approximately a year ago. And Mr. Lieberman was then approached by the Economic and Urban Development Department when the city was awarded new market tax credits. In order to apply for those new market tax credits and to use them in this project, Mr. Lieberman had to add some level of commercial to it. And so he has changed the first two stories from residential to commercial. So on the bottom floor, he is hoping to have some retail and/or office, and on the second floor, he is hoping to have some office. This change would enable him to apply for those new market tax credits and to move forward more quickly on the project. And with that, I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Please come forward and state your names and addresses for the record.
Hi, I'm Mike Peterman, 200 Hoover Avenue. We're certainly appreciative of getting rid of the eyesore of the doll's house and empty property. However, I feel the amount of units, or I should just say, the parking to me is totally inadequate. Your normal recommendation of 619 spaces for a project this size, but they're coming through with about 430. That's a significant discount to what is really required. Now, what the staff had mentioned in the minutes was that it's because of, it's real close to the bus stop, which it is. However, I've ridden that bus many times. It's mostly all tourists that go back and forth between the malls, and there's just not a lot of, you know, there's just no parking around the area. So we very much love to have the proposal. However, we just want more parking. It's just, with the bars across the street, right across the street, the parking lots are full most on many nights, let alone the events that go on every month. And over at Soho and over at Newport Lofts where I live, we always have a problem with people always trying to rent a spot and rent a spot. And they're just, now, we happen to have open parking on Hoover right across from our building. We happen to have an empty lot across that we can park in. Around on Coolidge, first of all, Casino Center, there's no parking allowed, and on Coolidge, there's only two-hour parking allowed during the day. So we just feel this is not, my personal thing, is just we don't feel there's enough parking for the structure. That's it.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir. If you'll give us your name and address.
Tyson Wrench, 200 Hoover Avenue as well. And I wanted to echo Mike's comments regarding the parking. I think we all, this neighborhood, we know what the parking situation is like around here as well. We've got the taxi company, all the taxi drivers park their personal cars in the neighborhood as well. Throw on First Friday, and you've got an absolute parking disaster, especially for the residents who live in that building that are going to try to come home and not find a parking spot. So I would, also, with regards to the fact that many of these people may take public transportation, I live right by that bus stop as well. I work from home. I walked here, but I have a car. We all have, I mean, having a car in this town is pretty necessary for the most part. So I would respectfully request that you unite us, let this go back, and let's get the required amount of parking spots required.
Thank you very much. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, allow the applicant a couple of minutes to respond.
My understanding is that residents and commercial users who live and work in this building will be allowed to rent a parking space in the building. The garage is one of the type that is used in larger urban areas where you enter into a garage elevator. It moves your car up and then into the building. The number of parking spaces, I believe, and perhaps Commissioner Slottman can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe was approved by this commission approximately a year ago. So really, what we're here for tonight is the addition of the commercial space into the project in order to have the new market tax credit funding.
Thank you very much. Open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Slottman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This was approved about a year ago, and I do appreciate the people from Newport coming out. I always appreciate hearing from everybody. But one way or another, if it did get built, it would have the same amount of parking spaces, whether if it goes with its current entitlements or the new entitlements. This might just allow it to get constructed a little bit quicker and easier. You know, one of the things that we desperately need downtown right now is housing. Newport totally sold out or 100% occupied on its rental places, from my understanding, for the most part. Jewel, Soho, Urban Lofts, the Ogden, everything is full. If I had 100 more units at my Urban Lofts, I could fill them all up. You know, one of the things that we need in downtown, especially right now, is more residents living down here. One disclosure, I do own a business in the area. It's not going to affect me any greater or lesser than anyone else, any other business or property owner. So therefore, my independent judgment won't be affected. Want to go ahead and throw that in there. However, for downtown to be great, we need to be able to start bringing in more of the residential. And a lot of times, we will look at the parking standards and waive some of these parking standards just to be able to attract some of these businesses and businesses or residential properties. And, you know, I think this is needed. I hope it comes. I know parking is precious down there sometimes. Not near as bad right there as it is, closer to Fremont East, but still, I think it's something that we need to encourage, and we need to get more residential down here. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Commissioner Boner?
Yeah, I know just enough about this elevated parking to be dangerous, but I do know that it comes in modular form, and you can go almost as high as any steel structure can. So if you're even thinking there might be a parking problem, or for goodwill, you might want to consider adding a module or two to that structure. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Trusdale?
Yeah, I actually think the commercial addition to this, over time, will prove to be very attractive. But as Commissioner Slottman said, we need dwelling units downtown, or none of this grand plan is going to come together if people can't live down here. So I hope this isn't the start of, like, approving 100 buildings that none of them get built. But I do believe this, the structure, as it's been resubmitted, is more in line.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Chairman, on item number, I'm sorry, we're on item 31. Item 31, SUP 55715, I'd move to approve. Followed in steps, recommendation of approval and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item 31 carries.
Chairman, on item 32, SDR 55716, I move to follow staff's recommendation of approval and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item 32 carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 31 and 32 will be heard at the November 19 City Council meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. Moving on now to item number 35, which is SUP 55012. The applicant owner is Brian and Judy Albeiser Living Trust. For possible action on request for a special use permit for a beer-wine-cooler off-sale establishment within an existing 2,000-square-foot general retail store other than listed at 1201 Stewart Avenue, Suite Number 3 in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed use meets all Title 1912 requirements for the beer-wine-cooler off-sale establishment use and is compatible with the other retail and office uses within the retail center. For these reasons, staff recommends approval of the request of special use permit with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we could hear from the applicant, please. Good evening, and give us your name and address.
My name is Judy Albeiser. I reside at 805 Shetland Road, Las Vegas, 89107.
Thank you.
Excuse me, my name is Brian Albeiser. Again, I reside at 805 Shetland Road, 89107.
Thank you. You agree with all staff's conditions?
Certainly do.
Thank you. Do you have anything else to say, or?
Nothing other than to say that we've owned the property now for some 32 years, and persevered through some very difficult situations, in particular, the last eight or 10 years. The suite previously had a bar with the beer, wine, and liquor license since, from 1964 through 2002. I owned the bar liquor store from '82, or we did, from '82 to '96, without incident, and sold it at that time. We foreclosed on it and got it back. And where I took the license out and rented it to a market at that time. So we've had both a market and a beer-wine and liquor store at this particular suite at this location in the past. The property, the suite, has been vacant now for some two and a half years. So we're putting the liquor store, convenience store market in there presently.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Goines?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I took a hard look at this item, and, you know, I read your justification, but I think this area down here is in transition. It is a lot of seniors. But I think, and I know there's a 7-Eleven a little bit to the east of this, which sells, I think it even sells hard liquor. But this is an area in transition, and I just don't believe this shopping center warrants a beer and wine license. And I noticed your justification letter says this will improve the aesthetics of the area, but I just don't see where it does. I won't be supporting this request this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, on item 35, SUP 55012, I move for denial.
Thank you, Commissioner. And please note that a yes vote is for denial. Motion to deny carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item will be heard at the November 19 City Council meeting.
Thank you. Moving on now to item number 36, which is SUP 55390. The applicant owner is Earl M. Morimoto Trust for possible action on request for a special use permit for a proposed off-premise sign at 3838 Meadows Lane in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on this item as much as I am the property manager of the center.
That's probably a good reason. Thanks. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposal to install an off-premise sign in close proximity to the low-density residential neighborhoods to the south and west fails to comply with the objective 2.4 of the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan, which is to ensure that the quality of existing residential neighborhoods are maintained and enhanced. An off-premise sign does not further mitigate the adverse effects associated with an existing residential, I'm sorry, existing effects associated with an existing residential neighborhood being located in close proximity to non-residential land uses. Since the proposal is not in accordance with the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan, does not meet the goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan area, and cannot be conducted in a harmonious and compatible manner with the surrounding land use. As a result, staff recommends denial. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could hear from the applicant, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioner, fellow, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. The sign meets all of the code requirements. The sign will not-
I first need to get your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Pat Sheehan from Fenimore Craig Jones Vargas on behalf of the Morimoto Trust. Again, the sign meets all of the code requirements. The sign will not be a flashing sign. It will not disrupt traffic. The sign is located in a very heavy commercial area behind the Meadows Mall on the northwest corner of Meadows Lane and Valley View. It's actually a perfect location for a sign. It's going to help the mall, which could certainly use some help these days. It can be used to advertise for the Springs Preserve so that people know that the Springs Preserve is there in that tricky location. It can advertise for many businesses in the area, which would actually benefit the area. I can certainly understand staff throwing in kind of the catch-all from the 2020 Master Plan. However, it really will have no effect on any residential whatsoever. The residential is 700, over 700, or approximately 700 feet away. And again, this is on the corner of, the northwest corner of Meadows and Valley View, so it doesn't affect any residential neighborhood. There's no residential on the east of it, the west of it, the south of it, the north of it. There's a big block wall that separates the neighborhood that is 700 feet away, and everyone there already is impacted by the mall. And this is, again, quite a bit of distance further down from where the mall is. And so I think it's going to be beneficial to everyone.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Quinn?
Good evening. When we met, there was not a single, nobody had phoned me about this sign. But in about the last three days and up until about an hour before this meeting, I had about five or six phone calls from people concerned that this sign is an off-premise sign and not an on-premise sign. And what the concern is, since I met with you, is that because we're losing so many businesses in that mall, namely, we just lost Dillard's. There's a chance we could be losing a few of the other anchor stores. People are very concerned as to what's going to go on that sign, being that it's an off-premise sign. And as much as I agree that that area needs to be lit up and it should be, you know, we should be known what's going on there, I just don't feel comfortable with the unknown of what could go on there with so many businesses closing in that area. And although I did tell you I was going to support this when I met with you, it was prior to me getting literally five calls in the last three days and one 10 minutes before this meeting, that what I'd like to do is just deny it at this level and go see the city councilwoman and give her some chance because this is an area that she feels so strongly about with the Springs Preserve and keeping that area clean and revitalized as much as we have. And with that mall going down so fast, I'm very scared what could go on that sign. And with no disrespect to you, because I am a woman of my word, these phone calls, sir, did not come in prior to me meeting with you. So I'm not going to support it this evening, but I'm sure after you meet with the councilwoman, it will be fine. Sorry.
May I?
I'm just being honest with you.
Sure.
I didn't think about it that way, you know. I didn't realize everything was closing over there. And then, off-premise scares me because it's not on-premise things you're going to be promoting because I don't know what's going to happen on that premise, you know. So anything can go up there, and it's my job to protect, maybe not what the neighborhoods are seeing directly behind them, but what people are seeing as they drive down that corridor that's been so important to my councilwoman. So this evening, you will not see my support on that sign.
Mr. Scott, I've got a question for you. The, if we were to put a condition on this, limiting it to only on-premise advertising, can we do that without re-noticing that, saying as though that that's a lesser use?
You could, but does this meet the on-premise advertising size and everything? I don't know that, if it does or not.
On-premise signs are not a use. Specifically, in Title 19, off-premise signs are a use. So if it was an on-premise sign that met code requirements, those don't come before the planning commission. If it needs a variance, which it might, I'm not sure if it does or not, then that variance for the sign would come before you. But once again, an on-premise sign is not a use, it's a sign. Off-premise signs pursuant to Title 19 are a use of land.
Casey may want to just obey this item, meet with the planning department if he does want to go for an on-premise sign.
Thank you.
And we can go that route.
That would be fine. Would that be fine with you? That would be fine. Would that be fine with you, uh, Mr.?
Sure.
Okay. Would that be fine with you?
Well, unfortunately not, because there—there may be—I—I believe that, for example, if we want to advertise for a business in the mall, that would be off-premises, because this particular property is not on the mall. So that's—that's—their—that lies the whole point to this. We want to advertise for the mall, uh, businesses. We want to advertise for the Springs Preserve. Now, I'm certainly happy to add a condition in the, um, in the conditions of—a of—a moral, uh, you know, moral, uh, type thing that we can't advertise, you know, uh, topless bars or anything that's gonna—to—to—to reflect poorly. Um, my client, you know, is—is obviously an upstanding thing, and we—we have no desire to put anything that's not going to—to—you know, to—to—to help the neighborhood. Larry's Meats, uh, Springs Preserve, we're—we're not going to be advertising, uh, and so—so a—a—a condition that, um, the—the sign, uh, has no, uh, businesses that don't meet, um, high—high moral standards is certainly, um, acceptable, uh, to us, but we—we have to have off.
And I understand that that's acceptable through you, Mr. Chairman, um, to you, but what if in two and a half years or four years, you decide to sell that sign and it's not acceptable to the next guy? So I'm going to—you choose not to, hold it this evening, so I'm going to make the motion to deny SUP 55390 at this time, and you can take it to city council. That's my motion.
Mr. Rankin, I'm just looking at the backup material on this. It seems as though this sign is on the expanded parcel, which includes the mall. Am I correct in the way I'm looking at this?
Uh, it is. Uh, yes, this is part of a commercial subdivision, so therefore, all the signage on here is part of one commercial subdivision. It—it might be on a separate ownership parcel, but for zoning purposes, it's one legal lot, so.
All right, then, we—we—we will go ahead and obey it, uh, so that we can, uh, so I can talk with the owner, um, and—and—and see whether that would be acceptable, if that's acceptable with Ms. Quinn.
And if you could please meet with the councilwoman's office prior to the next meeting, I would appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheehan.
So my—I'll change my motion then, if that's okay. Um, I'll resend the motion of—a of denial, and we will hold SUP 55390 to the next meeting, if that's okay with you, Mr. Rankin. Thank you.
Motion to obey, item number thirty-six, carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale. Moving on now to item thirty-seven, which is SUP 55487. The applicant is Mr. NNS Bonanza LLC. The owner is Water Street LLC for possible action on request for a special use permit for a packaged liquor off-sale use within a proposed 1,882-square-foot general retail establishment at 3595 East Bonanza Road, Suite Number 140, in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject suite is located within an existing shopping center and is 1,882 square feet in size, with 1,357 square feet of space to be used for the display of alcohol beverages. As this request meets all the minimum special use requirement—use permit requirements and can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with the existing shopping center, staff recommends approval of this application. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If we could hear from the applicant. Good evening, sir. If you'll give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the commission. Dave Etter, 777 East Quartz Avenue, Sandy Valley, Nevada. I'm here tonight representing the applicant in this matter. As, uh, was stated by staff, we are looking to put in a convenience store—or not a convenience store, excuse me—a liquor store in this section of the shopping center. It would be—if you see it on—it'll be right in here. It'll be—there's a tropical smoothie, a Boost Mobile, and then it will be in the empty space right in here. Uh, it is a commercial shopping center. It's off the corner of, uh, Bonanza, and, uh, it's far enough back over that it should not cause any trouble at all with congestion of traffic. It's got an easy egress and access to it. Uh, there is more than ample parking around it. Uh, it blends in very nicely in the community, and you can see all the landscaping that was done by the—the landlord and the developer. Uh, we feel that it would be a nice use. He's gotten lots of comments from it, and people are looking forward to seeing a—a nice upscale liquor store in the area. So with that, we hope that you'll, uh, see staff's recommendations as a—a good one, and, uh, hope that you'll give us an approval this evening.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I looked at this, and at the beginning, I didn't really have that big of an issue with anything. I looked at the photos and—but then, I started looking at the surrounding uses, and, um, I mean, we're surrounded by a large residential area. Uh, there's elementary school, uh, a block over on Bonanza. Right across the street, there's the Christian, uh, the Christian School. Um, a block to the northwest is Freedom Park with all the baseball fields. A block to the northeast, um, we have Desert Pines High School. Uh, right next to this, we have the golf course, and so—oh, and I'm forgetting to mention, um, the Family Courts and Services Center, and I think the Juvenile Detention Center is across the street, less than a block away. It—it just seems like there's a—a lot of uses in that area, you know, um, where there's a tremendous amount of kids that'll be in that area. I'm not worried about traffic. Um, I'm—I'm more worried about people purchasing liquor, walking through the streets, uh, with all the other uses, uh, surrounding that area for those reasons, and just because it—it's so heavily populated with—with all these uses, I wouldn't be able to support this.
All the uses that you've mentioned are well within—
Sir, we're going to just discuss, uh, amongst ourselves right now. Thank you, though. Any other commissioners wish to be heard on this? Commissioner Boner?
Yeah, with the, uh, I'm just like—every time we have a meeting, there—there's quite a few requests for liquor establishments, whether it's with a restaurant or sale of packaged liquor. And for a long time, I just went along because, well, I thought it was the right thing to do. I wanted to support the, uh, the coffers by liquor license sales, which are not inexpensive. But to tell you the truth, I thought it was overboard, and so I'm glad to see that there's others on the—on the commission that maybe it's time to draw a line, so I won't be supporting this either.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard on this item? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, on item number thirty-seven, SUP 55487, uh, due to the reasons that, um, I previously stated, I would, uh, make a motion, uh, for denial of this application.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Note—that a yes vote is for—is for denial. Motion to, uh, deny item number thirty-seven carries.
Mr. Chairman, uh, item thirty-seven will be heard at the November nineteenth city council meeting.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Have a good night. Item number forty, which is SUP 55786. The applicant is House of Bargains. The owner is Duckhorn LLC for possible action on request for a special use permit for a proposed 5,950-square-foot thrift shop use at 4,000 West Sahara Avenue in Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, staff finds the use to be compatible and harmonious with the surrounding uses and future uses and recommends approval.
Thank you. Do we have an applicant? And for the record, uh, I'm going to have to abstain on this matter. I'm on the Board of Directors for Goodwill, and I think, uh, we have a store that's located fairly close to this. So I'll be abstaining on this. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Doesn't look like we have an applicant. Uh, do any members of the public wish to be heard on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Uh, Commissioner Quinn, do you have a recommendation about how you want to handle this?
I—I'd like to hold it, please.
Okay.
For—till next month.
So the motion is to obey until the next planning commission meeting?
Yeah.
Please vote.
Thank you.
And item forty is obeyed until the November planning commission meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. Going on now to directors' business. We're on item number forty-one, which is TXT 55360. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas for discussion and possible action on request to update the downtown centennial plan to add medical marijuana dispensary as a permitted use with approval of a special use permit in 18B, the Las Vegas Arts District in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff has no recommendation. May we have a report, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this application, uh, this text amendment will, uh, permit, uh, medical marijuana dispensaries in the future to be permitted within the downtown centennial plan for the 18B Arts District by means of a special use permit. Uh, in addition, there's also a cleanup here. Uh, the term supper club is an antiquated term and has been removed from Title Nineteen, and as such, staff is recommending that, uh, we replace that with restaurant with alcohol use for the 18B Art District to conform to Title Nineteen definitions of that use.
Thank you. We'll now open it up for public comment. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? And I see quite a—
Mr. Chairman, before I go further, um, I'd like to reiterate a half a dozen disclaimers and disclosures I've made over the process of going through the medical marijuana process. I do, um, own property in the Arts District. I normally vote on these ordinances, because I have—I'm not impacted any greater or any less by, uh, by the ordinance, but in this particular case, there—in the way these ordinances have come together, and I've made other disclosures that, um, have other—I manage other properties that have different uses that related to this. But I—I—it's important to—for me to at least voice this to the, uh, to staff. And, uh, two things, when, uh, Director Flynn Fag was here, uh, this process started, uh, we approached, uh, to get some information, uh, with regard to the Medical District and the Arts District, uh, during the process of medical marijuana. And in both cases, we're told both districts did not qualify in any way, shape, or form. Uh, in fact, no applications would be accepted. Uh, I think if this is a cleanup to the Arts District, why wouldn't it clean up the Medical District at the same time? Uh, seems like we're trying to clean up one special problem as opposed to another. Um, but beyond that, um, since this may or may not have a greater impact, I reserve all my rights under, um, as a citizen of Las Vegas with regards to any—any potential legal action, and I will abstain on this item.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sloman?
Just want to disclose the same thing, that I own—own a business in the Arts District, and, um, it's not going to have effect on me any greater or lesser than any other business owner in that area. Um, and so therefore, I don't think my independence of judgment will be affected, so we'll be voting on this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners? Okay, uh, what we're going to do, because it looks like we're going to have quite a few speakers, I'm going to limit everybody to three minutes, like we've been doing with the others earlier this evening. So if you can make your comments fit within those timeframes, I would appreciate it greatly. Thank you, sir, and good evening, if you'll give us your name and address.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Flengis. Sean Higgins, Porter Gordon Silver, 3960 Howard Hughes Parkway, Ninth Floor. I'm here on behalf of my client, Nevada Carers. Uh, we are here to voice our support for this text amendment. Uh, over the course of six days in September and October, uh, my client, uh, employed, uh, pollsters who went out—uh, signature gatherers who went out around the Arts District, and over the course of those days, uh, collected signatures from 297 individuals, business owners, uh, the people who worked there, residents of the area, as well as, uh, customers and consumers of in the area. So I'd like to, um, make that a part of the record and submit that to, uh, staff with—with the name and the signatures.
Thank you very much.
Uh, additionally, uh, we have spoken with, uh, Mr. Dick Guyer, who is the, um, the current past president of the Arts District. Uh, he has voiced his support and said that he would offer any help, uh, to, uh, helping us, uh, get this amendment, uh, text amendment passed, uh, and those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Scott Sibley, 930 South Fourth Street, on behalf of Downtown Holdings Group. I'm speaking in support of this item. Uh, my family, we've been business owners downtown since 1960. We publish the Nevada Legal News. We also, uh, currently own—my family owns most of the 900 block of Third Street and Fourth Street, which is located in the Arts District. Um, in fact, I met my wife—my wife downtown twenty years ago. Uh, we've been and continue to be supporters of growing businesses and residential downtown, and we would like to, um, have you guys support this. It was my understanding that the Arts District wasn't excluded like they did Fremont Street, but that it was inadvertently not, um, added into the ordinance, so we just ask you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Mona Lisa Samuelson. I live on Kirkland Avenue, Las Vegas, 89102. I'm here to speak in support. Um, I just wanted to come down and remind you that I am a medical marijuana patient, one of the many here in Las Vegas, and I am not the criminal element. We live in these places, in these communities, and we need places to help us in these communities. So I feel that the Arts District is a very, um, beneficial place to put a dispensary, so please keep that in mind. I'm here to speak in support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Quinn, start with you.
Good evening. Um, I read over this text amendment, and I—I feel very strongly that by passing it, we're still going to look at each use, item by item by item. So although it's going to get—if it gets passed, we're still going to look at them individually. You understand that? So even though it's in the Arts District, every special use permit will be looked at individually. So you will see my support on the text amendment, but keep in mind, it will be an individual look at each property as they come in front of me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Chairman. Um, I've—I've heard of people in support and people in protest of this. Um, but over—the—over the past couple of weeks, I've heard not a peep out of anybody in the Arts District, which is kind of weird. Um, however, um, I—I don't have a problem with this. It's not going to add in dispensaries, uh, to the Arts District right now, because by the time anybody would be able to get a application in, it would be too late. Um, you know, and as Commissioner Quinn said, we'll—we'll be looking at these on a case-by-case basis. Is it appropriate right next to a restaurant or a bar, a art gallery, or is it in one of the corners of—of the Arts District where, um, you know, there's not much going on, where it might be appropriate? Um, but I think, uh, that's for us to look at in the future, and so, uh, for those reasons, I could support this.
Ms. Jim, if I could—just for the record, this does not reopen the medical marijuana process. This does not allow anyone to make a filing for a medical marijuana dispensary, cultivation facility, or production facility. This is none—none of that. So that process has passed, that time has passed, and, uh, this has not reopened that process.
Commissioner Moody?
So this follows the city attorney's comment, and—and I guess my question is for staff. If we had two special lengthy planning commission meetings in September, and now we're looking at this possible text amendment, um, knowing that we've already approved those items that are going to be—twelve will be selected by the state, what—what does this actually mean for us as a—as a planning commission?
Uh, at the time that, uh, medical marijuana compliance permits are opened again by the director sometime in the future, the—the 18B Arts District, if this text amendment is ultimately approved by council, would be eligible. It would be a use listed on the 18B Art District, uh, permitted use list, and someone could apply in the future, once those permit processes are opened again by the director of planning. in the future, once those permit processes are opened again by the director of planning.
Thank you. Commissioner Bonner?
Personally, I don't believe that including or excluding the Arts District was a mistake. I think it was done on purpose, and for that reason, I want to approve even the text amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard on this? Okay, Mr. Scott, clarification. Are we voting on an actual text amendment, or are we voting on to have a request to have a text amendment drafted?
You're voting on the actual text amendment. And that's just to add medical marijuana as a permissible use within the Arts District.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, one, one comment, just on the Arts District. The Arts District was created in a way where we, our city planners listed every use that they felt was appropriate for the Arts District at that particular time, or however that come about. The thing was, there wasn't medical marijuana years ago that wasn't a, a particular use that was out there, so it wouldn't have been included, or it wouldn't have been excluded for that, any reason. It just, it was a use that didn't exist. If y'all remember, a year ago, we had microgreens come before us. Somebody was wanting to start growing herbs and things like that for all the restaurants downtown. Since we never put it into the ordinancees, this is something that we would like to see. You know, he couldn't do it without the text amendment, so therefore, it wasn't necessarily excluded that we're against microgreens, we just never thought of it. So for those reasons, I think this is acceptable on item 41, TXT 55360. I'd move to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number 41 carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be forwarded to City Council in ordinance form.
Item number 42 is TXT 56022, for discussion and possible action on a request to amend LVMC Chapter 19.08.120.4, related to changeable electronic message signage and to provide for other related manners, matters. Staff has no recommendation. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this text amendment will add requirements for on-premise electronic signs. Those requirements would be, requires a minimum of six seconds between messages, and a transition time not to exceed two seconds between those messages on a changeable electronic sign. Also, it will limit the brightness to a maximum of 300 nits with an auto dimming system, system to adjust the brightness for various times a day. State and federal guidelines suggest these criteria. None of them have made law at this time, but there are multiple safety studies and traffic studies attempting to address the issue of signs that have motion to them and animation. These standards are, have been adopted by the, the Outdoor Advertising Sign Association. I don't know if I have that exactly right, what they're called, but there, there is a group of sign purveyors that have an association, and staff actually recommends approval of these, and we don't have a no recommendation, we're actually recommending approval of these items as they are something that the Planning Commission has asked for in the past. Staff has been doing research on these, and we find that the, an approval is warranted on these, these signs.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll open it for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, for staff, does this affect existing signs or just signs going forward?
It hasn't been written one way or the other. I would defer to the city attorney's office if those other signs enjoy some type of...
Because I think we have a lot of them in the marketplace.
Non-conforming, I think they might, because we do have a non-conforming sign section within Title 19.
Mr. What's the question? The question is whether the existing signs would not be held to this standard, because... Oh, no, no. I mean, they, they, I guess if they changed the sign, then it would be held to the standard, but if it stays the same, they won't. Okay, so all the existing LED signs can have the flashing... Correct. The non, the distance between... Yeah, normally we don't relate back, I'm sorry, normally we don't relate back with, with ordinances, we normally go forward, so anything that didn't exist before this ordinance would be subject to it. Anything that existed before would not.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Moody?
Yeah, I just want to thank staff. We've had a number of discussions about lumens and transition times between, between signs, so I'm glad we have this to vote on, and there will be less issues moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. On item 42, TXT 56022, move to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item 42 carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item will be forwarded to City Council in ordinance form.
Thank you. Going on to our last item, which is item number 43, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Good evening, if you'll state your name and address, please.
Once again, my name is Mona Lisa Samuelson. I live on Kirkland Avenue, Las Vegas, 89102. I just want to say thank you, it's been another hard, long day. I am a very hurt person, and some of my constituents aren't here because they're hurt. They wanted to say thank you, so a big thank you from Vicki Higgins, who is another advocate. But I'm also up here tonight because I take great offense, I hurt so bad, yet I want to be part of my community and do good things. And I take great offense when I hear this commission say that there's good reason that medical marijuana's been kept out of the Art District, but I don't know how to be, who I should be more offensive, who, who to be more defensive for. Medical marijuana patients, because we are not the criminal element. In fact, you are using our rights to make the city a lot of money, so please keep that in mind. And two, or should it be, I should be more offended as an artist, because a lot of us are too hurt to work a nine-to-five job. We get hurt, and we are the sick, injured, and dying. So this is our community in a way, and we not, once again, we're not the criminal element. We are trying to be productive citizens, and that means not taking opiates. So please, keep this in mind, we're not the criminal element, and I take great offense to this. And when you have medical marijuana patients coming in here, this is worse than being offensive, because, you know, people came in here to talk about an apartment complex. We're sick, injured, and dying, and we're coming in here, so please don't offend us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to be heard? Saying none, open it up, any members of the commissioners, of the commission to be heard. Saying none, this meeting is adjourned.